Twenty-three regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you all please silence your personal communication devices? Yes, sir.
I don't believe it's coming through.
My light's on.
On.
Can, can you hear?
Mine's on.
How about that? Oh, there we go.
Is yours on?
Alright, so, um, Commissioner Passiak, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which I stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have a full commission. Um, I would like to entertain a motion for the consent calendar, provided nobody has any questions on the minutes or that sort of business.
I, I have one correction to the minutes.
Okay.
The comment where they ended.
You're fired.
Where I voted in favor and I shared that the sewer line was more than a mile away and it was not cost effective. The cost I cited was one million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. And that's based on the length and the three hundred dollars per foot, so the one million dollars should be changed.
Okay, and now what item is that, Gary?
That's on page three of the minutes, where your finger is.
Got it, okay, so one point, how much? Is there any other changes? Can we enter that into the minutes? The figure is one million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand and four hundred dollars.
On page three.
Yes, on page three, under Commissioner Passiak's name, when we explain the vote. He mentioned one million dollars, or that's what was written down. He wants to amend that to one million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand and four hundred dollars.
The number I gave you is the one I gave at the meeting.
Yeah, okay, and so to clarify, that's the number he gave at the meeting, but it didn't come across in the minutes that way. Okay. Do I hear a motion with the change, mind you?
I make, I make a motion except the consent calendar with red correction.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Okay, so we're gonna come to item D one, which is ZC twenty-two-three zero dash zero-one. This is a request by Adam Haywood to rezone approximately twenty-one acres of land from agricultural, residential five acre to single-family residential one acre. Properties located at the southeast quarter of North Road one east and Red Cinder Road in Chino Valley, Arizona. So Commissioner Matters is going to recuse herself for this item because she is a property owner nearby. And has anybody else talked to anybody about this? Okay. Normally, we don't do that because we have a quorum. Yeah. And then, um, also, were there any commission members at the meeting, the public, uh, meeting? The neighborhood meeting, correct? Okay, did you speak as a member of the public or as a member of the commission? Okay, and you, okay, and you had, you offered opinions and that sort of stuff in there. Okay, alright, so that's good. Okay, um, would you please give us the presentation?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the town of Chino. As read the item before you is a requested rezon from the agricultural residential five acre minimum zoning district to the SR one, single-family residential one acre minimum zoning district for the proposed Red Cinder Estates subdivision. This is the first leg of the subdivision process. If the rezoning is approved by council, the project will still need to come through for preliminary plat and final plat approval. The applicant is in attendance this evening. The proposal consists of two parcels totaling twenty-one acres in size. To the north of the property, you have the Arizona Horse Connections. To the west, you have CVP Medical Marijuana Cultivation Facility, along with the Chino Valley Mobile Home Ranch. To the south, you have the Perkinsville Forty-four subdivision and Bonnie Plant Farm. Now, the property is currently zoned AR five, and the property owner is requesting a rezon to SR one. The surrounding, surrounding the subject property is a mix of zoning districts, which includes AR five and SR one to the north, SR one Commercial Light and a Commercial Light AR five blend to the west. To the south, AR five and a SR zero point one-six PAD with the Perkinsville Forty-four subdivision. And then to the east is agriculture residential five and single-family residential one. Now, staff did feel it was important to note that the surrounding acreage in conjunction with the zoning map around the subject properties, while there are a lot of AR fives in the area, there are some that fall short of that five acre minimum requirement, as noted. So everything on here, all of these numbers are all acreages, um, according to the assessors based on those properties as they currently sit. So there are several at one acre and so, um, many below one acre, uh, due to the right-of-way dedications and whatnot that have occurred throughout history. And then, of course, to the south with Perkinsville Forty-four is the hundred and sixty-two lots at seven thousand square feet each. General plan, land use designation for the subject properties, along with the land to the north, east, and south is medium-density residential, two acres or less. To the west is commercial multifamily. The requested zoning district of SR one is in conformance with the general plan. Though not required at this point in time for the zoning, the applicant did offer up a conceptual site plan. It consisted of sixteen, potentially seventeen lots, all one acre in size, all access through two new proposed cul-de-sac roads. The lots are proposed to be connected to, or to be on well and septic. And the applicant is offering a deed restriction or is instituting a deed restriction to site-built homes only, so no manufactured homes on site. Now, there were two neighborhood meetings held, one on April twenty-sixth and one on April twenty-seventh, due to an error within the staff postcard that went out. All properties received this notice within six hundred feet. On the April twenty-sixth meeting, eleven community members were in attendance. The topics of concern that were discussed during that meeting can be found, excuse me, on the slide before you. On the April twenty-seventh meeting, no members of the public attended, just staff and the applicant. Now, out of all of the topics of concern, uh, that was talked about, one was the lot configuration and the adequate emergency exits, citing singular access points for the project with those two proposed roads. And then in addition, the existing send, Red Cinder neighborhood, only having that one entry accident point on North one east. So, following that comment, staff had dialogue with the applicant and discussed the conceptual circulation plan that they can bring forward if the zoning is approved. The idea would be to have a singular access point off North one east for the development, which leads into a new proposed looped road for the development, and then a secondary access point, uh, coming out on Red Cinder Road. This not only addresses that access, emergency access point that was brought up, but it also satisfies or helps alleviate the concerns of the Red Cinder neighbors with only having that one ec, or existing one exit. So it gives them an option of a potential second. To date, staff has received two letters of opposition of the project. Those can be found within your packet. And then staff is recommending that the planning commission forward a recommendation to town council to approve the rezoning with the conditions of approval found in attachment A. And we'll go ahead and open it up to questions or discussion, and I'll go ahead and throw up the circulation concept that was discussed with the applicant.
Thank you, Will. We have questions?
So, Will, with Perkinsville Forty-four going in, even with that completed, sewer and water is still thirteen hundred and fifty feet away.
Frank, can you qualify that?
Thank you, Will. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, by my calculations, I believe sewer, its final stage and water would be about six hundred and seventy-five feet away.
Can you kind of show us where that might end up, please?
Sure, I can show you right here on the map. So the, the Perkinsville sewer and water goes all the way to the north end of the, the property for the Perkinsville Forty-four development, which is almost, is that Adams? Is that Adams, Will?
Yeah.
So right, right at Adams, and so there's a gap of along one east of that. And besides, the sewer has an additional issue of, uh, actually, the sewer doesn't even run up one east, so I'd have to be corrected. That's for water only, because the sewer, the way gravity feeds, uh, sewer wouldn't be, you'd have to lift it and put a force main in to get the sewer back to Perkinsville Road to get it to flow. So the sewer is at Perkinsville.
Water is at Adams, but the sewer is at Perkinsville.
Right, because it's downhill from Perkinsville to Adams along one east. So if you had sewer in one east, you would technically come up Granite Creek and then come from the north on one east when you install sewer, if you, if we had a master plan, which we're working on.
Which, there was some talk for a different project that that happening many years ago in that direction.
Right, and Granite Creek, I don't want to alarm the folks that live on Granite Creek. There's not sufficient right-of-way, there's gaps in the right-of-way, so there's no intention to build sewer at Granite Creek right now. So I don't want to start that panic.
But that would be the direction it would come from unless you decided to spend the money for the force main at Perkinsville.
Right, you would have to create a lift station and then force it to the manhole at Perkinsville and one east.
What kind of cost is involved in that?
Lift stations are, uh, probably a quarter million dollars or so just for the individual lift station. And then if you add, could be quarter to a half million, depending on the type of lift station and the power. You need backup generators and electronic supplies and all that, so it's, it's doable. It's just expensive. Uh, the only lift station we have in town right now is, uh, our main lift station to lift everything up to the plant right now, so.
But water is six something away.
Right. But our code.
Can't do water without sewer.
Hmm, yes, you can. Yeah, well, they're pretty much separate as far as utilities go, uh, but, uh, if I, should I go ahead and get into this?
We would appreciate any education.
Okay, the, the town code that I follow is town engineer. For, for water, um, it states new subdivisions containing lots of less than one acre shall connect to the town's water system. Lots one acre or greater, which are within three hundred feet of the water system, shall connect. The lots here are not within three hundred feet, so, and for sewer, it says a subdivision containing lots greater than or equal to one acre may be permitted to install septic tanks if sewer is not available within three hundred feet. So neither one of those conditions are met.
For town code.
Right, I know a lot of people say, well, it's, it's close, it's only seven hundred feet. Well, the rules I go by that council set are three hundred feet. If it was three oh one, I would still recommend that they be allowed septic if they want. And then it would be council's decision. These are council rules. If they want to change rules, then it's council's decision, but as staff that works under the direction of council, I go by these rules.
What does water cost per foot?
Uh, I think our last project was about three hundred and fifty dollars a foot, and our sewer is right there too.
It's more money than sewer then.
It's, they're close. We've, we've had, I would have to look up the exact projects. But the pevine water line, it was a big one, it was eighteen inches, but the, the main cost is in the digging and the installation of the pipe. The price difference of the pipe is, uh, between twelve and eighteen inches, about forty or fifty dollars a foot for the materials, so. Um, and we're putting sewer down one east to the south now, and that, from Center Street down to Three South was about, uh, two point one million dollars for the sewer portion of that project. So it works out, I can comfortably say it's over three hundred. It's between three hundred and three fifty for both of those, I would.
For water, for water only.
Each.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, and sewer is about the same price there. They tend to run, you exchange valves, water valves for sewer manholes, and the costs are pretty comparable. For all the.
So I did some math before the meeting for the sewer at four hundred and it was based on your millennial footage for the sewer, not counting any force main or anything, but from where you said it was thirteen hundred and change.
Okay, did we have that in the comments or something?
It was.
Yeah, thirteen fifty.
Yeah, that would, so, so that's where probably the sewer would lie, if you're talking sewer.
So Gary points out that in staff report, they both had the same millennial footage, thirteen hundred and fifty millennial feet for water and sewer, but now we're hearing.
Well, well, I would stand by the staff report without having the as-bilts and the drawings in front of me. So, because to be honest, my assistant engineer did the development review for this, and he checks all that stuff, so. I, if it's in the staff report, I would stick by those numbers.
Okay.
If I can offer some clarification to that, the assistant, uh, town engineer, that distance is based on the fact that, that the water line has not been, at the time of the staff report, had not been installed in Perkins, or, um, excuse me, North Road one east at that time. They had not run it all the way up that, so at the time of the staff report, it was still at the intersection of Perkinsville.
Okay, and so they, but they have run it up.
I believe they have since, correct.
So water's half the distance.
Correct.
Okay, so at the, at three hundred bucks a foot, at the footage, it was four hundred and five thousand dollars for the sewer. And then if you split that in half, because we're halfway there approximately, that's, uh, uh, two hundred and two, five thousand, so you're looking at six, you're looking at over six hundred thousand dollars.
If you brought both.
If you brought both up to the property. If, and two hundred thousand and change if we just brought water up to the property. When, if you, and I divided it out by twenty, one acre lots, not thinking that there would be some loss because of roads, that comes out to around fifty grand. Uh, well, it'd be less than that now because I had base two hundred bucks a foot on it anyways. It's around forty thousand dollars a property cost to just get it to the property, not counting the infrastructure to take it to every property. Just rough figures, based on what we had to look at. So, that's a pretty significant number, and then now we have, find out we would have to have a lift station as well because the ground's running the wrong direction.
Water only would be about ten thousand a lot.
Yes, I agree, but combining them together.
Does the town any interest in having water only to this, this subdivision?
Is the town willing to sell water and not sewer to go with it?
Mr. Chair, members of the, the commission, that would be a council decision if they wanted to participate in any of this, and they do have that ability in the code if they want to, uh, act in the developers, act as a developer, act with the developer. Um, those provisions are in the code if they choose to do so.
So it, let's just hypothetically go down the road here. Let's say that one of the stipulations winds up being bringing sewer, uh, bringing water to the property because it's six hundred feet, not thirteen hundred feet. The town council could accept that if they chose to do that, if we recommended it.
Right, and typically, it would take the form of a development agreement between the town and the developer to work together on something of that nature.
And that's just to get it to the property, not distribute it throughout the subdivision itself.
Typically, uh, one acre lot is two hundred by two hundred, so figure two hundred feet of frontage at the developer's cost to extend those across the frontage of each lot.
Okay, um, anybody else have questions for Will or the town engineer, Mr. Marbury?
Yeah, I, I have a question for the town engineer. Hypothetically, hypothetically, if the town decided to reach an agreement with the developer, that would entail probably the town paying for the water line going up to the three hundred foot limit for the developer, which would be, what, close to a hundred thousand dollars?
Well, if, if that's the hypothetical you go with.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's all sorts of options that they could elect to do. They could pay for all of it if they wanted to, uh, I don't know where they'd get the money, but.
Yeah, that's, I'm, the point I'm raising is, is that it's not going to be free.
Right, the money would have to come.
It's going to cost the town something to work a partnership with.
The money would have to come from somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for staff? We'll probably holler at you before this is over again. Okay, the representative is here. Would you care to step up and speak?
Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Uh, I'm Adam Haywood from Borderlands LLC. I'm the applicant on this project. Will pretty much covered everything, uh, that I was going to cover on this. Uh, something I do want to reiterate is the development agreement with the town, some of their stipulations is that it is deed restricted to site-built homes only. There will be more dedications of roadways, uh, to reach, reach the target width per the master plan for the right-of-way, right-of-way widths, and then improvements along Red Cinder and Road one east right there. And those will include pavement improvements to the road and drainage improvements to the side of the road. Um, we're pending an engineering drainage study right now that we kind of threw up some conceptual stuff, showing, showing some cul-de-sacs. Um, we're definitely willing to, uh, go with the circular design that only has one entrance onto Road one east. If that's something that, that's something that Public Works would like and that, uh, would suit people better. Um, as far as the water line extensions and stuff like that, I don't know what the appropriate place to sit down and talk about those things are, but that is definitely something that we would be, would be willing to do. Uh, if, especially if it's in some kind of, uh, participatory type of, uh, type of situation. Uh, all streets internally on the subdivision, whether it is a loop or a cul-de-sac, pretty much anything we do is looking to be constructed to town code and then dedicated to the town, um, during the subdivision process. And, uh, does anybody have any questions or need clarification on anything?
Okay, so does anybody on the commission have questions? Speak into the micro.
How many wells are you going to have to put on the property?
So we'll be looking at pretty much if, uh, right now, I have, I think I have it tentatively drawn up as sixteen lots. We'd be looking at sixteen of, uh, individual wells, um, potentially seventeen, depending on how the, uh, uh, we're going to dedicate a strip, uh, to the town for, uh, landscaping in the front, and potentially that could need its own separate well, that we'd essentially drill a well and dedicate that well to the town to maintain whatever types of trees or foliage go in there. But, uh, so we have it drawn up as sixteen right now.
Anybody else?
S, so, thank you, Surfer, coming up to speak. Um, so you would be open to dialogue with the town as far as running water only?
Yeah, and if that, if that's something that, uh, uh, public, uh, that we could sit down and have a discussion with Public Works and see, that we talked about sewer in the beginning, we talked about, uh, originally going for half acre zoning and bringing all utilities up there, and it didn't, didn't seem that, uh, sewer was really feasible in that area through the, through the route we had right now off Perkinsville. So we backed off to one acre and, uh, decided to go with exempt wells and septics.
Yeah, it's too bad, uh, gravity isn't with us at that site. That would improve things also, but water.
Water's critical.
Water would help, that'd be a big thing, so I'd like to see that happen. That'd be great.
So you're, you're, according to what we've been hearing, is you would be amenable to talk with the town about some sort of water line participation, whatever that looks like, to bring it from Adams Street up to your property and then distribute it throughout the subdivision.
Yeah, and just to see what, and to, to get the particulars on the deal, to look at exactly what we'd be dealing with, exa, exactly what are the footages, what are the, uh, uh, so we could, uh, si, sit down with Frank when we, Frank and Steve, and we have all the, all the hard data and things, and then work out what the, uh, what the cost would be each way, and, uh, what part the town would be willing to play, if any, in a situation like that, and then, uh, make a decision and go from there.
Alright.
So we have been pursuing up to this point, uh, the, uh, wells and septics, and have, uh, data and information from the Arizona Department of Water, Water Quality. And we have, uh, Jim Holt here who has a couple of comments to make and, uh, information to pass along in that, uh, in those regards.
He can come up during public participation.
Perfect.
Alright, anybody else have questions? We may call you back up after public participation is done. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to open this next portion of the meeting for public comments. Um, there's a few people in the audience here tonight. When you come up, please state your name. I will call on people to come up, uh, wait till I call on you. I'm going to give you three minutes to speak. DeeDee's gonna run the clock. Um, we have two people who have asked to speak, so they'll go first. And then anybody after that, I'll call on you when you step up and state your name. Please remember, we're grownups, we will be polite, concise. If there's a lot of repetition, please just say that I agree with that person that spoke before me. Believe me, I take notes, and so do these other folks. Your, your opinion won't be lost. So, um, I'm going to call up Diane Norberg. She was the first one to submit. If you please step up to the microphone and state your name, and then you got three minutes. Don't worry, we, we're as friendly as you can get. If you'll pull that microphone down to your face so that the public can hear you.
I printed it out, so I don't ramble. I hope I do well.
You'll do fine.
My name is Diane Norberg. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for your time and allowing me to share. When my husband and I moved here last year, we chose Chino Valley because of the small-town atmosphere. We specifically chose our property because we like the feel of living in the country and not a larger town. We looked at Prescott, Cottonwood, Camp Verde, Jerome, Dewey, Ash Fork, and several other towns. None of them felt like Chino Valley or the neighborhood that we chose right off of Red Cinder. We love being surrounded by the sights and sounds of small ranches and farms with horses, goats, chickens, and other animals. This was our retirement dream. We knew when we moved here, we would have to drive at least twenty minutes to do most of our shopping, medical appointments, et cetera, but it was a compromise we chose, so we could enjoy living in an uncrowded, small town in the country. We just plan ahead if we need to do something out of town. Most of the residents of Chino Valley want to keep that small-town feeling that we have. Of course, there will be growth, but the commission needs to be mindful of what they allow and keep in mind the feelings and wishes of the current residents, not so much the developers. If you allow these five acre lots to be rezoned to one acre lots, it does not benefit the current neighbors. It only puts more money in the developer's pocket. The residents here like the wide-open spaces, rural country views, and ability to have livestock. Local realtors tell us that people come to Chino Val, Valley specifically looking for large lots to have horses, certainly more than two acres. We will already be dealing with the overcrowding and pollution that the Perkinsville Forty-four track homes will be adding to our surrounding roads. That'll be right next to these new homes being proposed. Uh, that will add somewhere near three hundred more cars to our neighborhood when it is complete. Sorry. There is no need for more homes in this area. It does not benefit us. The number of added homes should be. The number of added homes should be kept to a minimum, minimum for the sake of the neighbors. Uh, Road One is already narrow and in bad shape. More traffic would just make it worse. I hope the commission is working for the current residents who voted for them, and I hope they are listening to what we want. Wide-open, uncrowded spaces with a country feel and views. Speaking of views, I would also like to request that none of these new homes would be two stories. Even single stories would be taking away some of our views. Please do not allow one-acre rezoning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. No applause, please. It's not a studio. Okay, so the next person up is Rachel Furnell.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I'm Rachel Furnell, and I am an alternate for planning and zoning. Um, I'm just gonna go down my list because I took some.
Rachel, are you speaking as an alternate for the commission or as a public, a private citizen?
Public person, but I've been instructed to announce that I also assume that role.
Thank you.
Um. So, when Will was doing his breakdown of this project and he was citing that there was parcels surrounding it that were less than an acre and the reason that they were less than acres is because they had dedicated land to the town. I just wanna bring up when we were discussing a CUP a couple of months ago, Frank noted that even though that lot was under an acre, they were not going to force that person to tie in because the dedications that they gave to the town would technically qualify it as an acre. So there seems to be a little bit of confusion between our town code and what is actually an acre, what's counted toward an acre and what's not. Um, I think that it's more common sense that if you dedicate a portion of your property to the town, that no longer goes toward the acreage that you manage. You're not paying taxes on it and you're not maintaining it. So we need to, at some point, have that cleared up. Um, additionally, I'm not sure with this project. To the south of the property, right here, there is already an easement through there. Um, and it's been brought to my attention by some members of the audience. Why aren't we just going to continue Three North through here? Then you can have an entrance here and that takes One East out of it all the way. That could also be an infrastructure extension. So that's an option for the applicant to consider. Um, you guys talked a lot about the numbers for the lift station, the numbers for extending water and sewer. Um, I know that that comes up a lot. I just don't think it is our burden to bear to take that away from a developer. That's the cost of doing business. I ran the rough numbers. Um, actually, these are not rough. They are exact for the sales in Chino Valley for one-acre lots with site-built homes over the last year. The average sales price for those homes was five hundred and eighty-five thousand and sixty-six dollars. That is a fact. So we're talking about, you know, sixteen lots, maybe seventeen, a potential sellout, given the average prices over the last year for our community with like properties of nine-point-three million and some change. So that's quite a profit to make. Additionally, if you look at the averages for what a septic and septic and well cost per property in the U.S., the two thousand twenty-three statistics are anywhere between six thousand and twenty thousand. So just for average, we can say thirteen thousand a lot. That's gonna come out to about two hundred and eight thousand dollars that the developer would save that could go towards the infrastructure extension. So um, I've spoke with Adam a lot. Um, I think that he represents Allen and that they are gonna be willing to work with the town. But just wanna take some of these figures into consideration, so I know there's members of council who have already said they're having a really hard time approving projects that are not tying into town infrastructure. We're not talking about two miles here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Tony Graybill.
Hello, my name is Tony Graybill, Chino Valley resident. Thank you for allowing me to share. Um, gosh, my neighbors have pretty much said it all. However, I really do wanna thank the developer for his willingness to be cooperative and maybe work with the town. I think there are some other avenues. So Rachel just mentioned maybe the Three North Avenue, and this might be a naive question, but I was wondering why we couldn't uh, you know, backhoe and make it flat along the north, straight to the water station. I don't know how to use this thing, but. Can't the ground be leveled and all that? But anyway, thank you. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. Okay, James Olson.
Good evening. I live on the corner of one, James Olson, the corner of One East and Red Cinder, so it applies pretty much to my life. Something that came up in my mind only because of what I've retired. I'm a plumbing salesman. The lift station, all the stuff, the eighteen-inch pipe, sold all of it. Uh, if I understand UKM, the Arizona rules, uh, they got what's called feedback credits. In other words, if you develop water, you put it in, you have to collect it with the sewer and it's given back. And you have a tax issue for the municipality who is running the water thing. If you bring water only, you're gonna get hurt. In other words, your tax, it may be a hidden cost to you guys. This is nothing to do with this project, but running one without the other, ha, the state will comes up and bites you eventually. So then nobody's talking about that. I tried to mention it. Other than that, uh, my neighbors, Rachel, and everybody, that's pretty much it. Um, I did notice, and it has nothing to do with this direct one, everybody's talking about the Three North. Uh, yeah, you could run Three North. Um, that would be preferable. I can't see the running this side, uh, living where I do. Obviously, the Red Cinder exit, somebody mentioned how giving people an e- an escape from Red East, that's only about maybe a hundred, hundred-and-fifty feet difference up to the corner. So I don't see the benefit of having them run out to Red Cinder. Anyway, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Tom Truba.
Yeah, my name's Tom Truba, and I live on Red Cinder Road. And the traffic, the road is terrible, like all the rest of roads in town. And how are you gonna put, come right out on the red, on the Red Cinder Road? It's not feasible. There's just no way that you can come out on that road. And but we're already, we got a lot of traffic on that road. And I just can't see it, you know? It's just a big mistake. And like I said, the roads here in this town are bad. They need to start working on the roads. And that's just what I feel. And I've lived here twenty years on Red Cinder and there's, it's just unreal with traffic on that road. And to add more traffic will just be a headache. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ralph Wickin. Is it Wickin or Wilken? Thank you.
My name's Ralph Wilken. I live on uh One East there. Um, I know I'm just one person. I know I've lived here for twenty-plus years, obviously, as our, as my neighbors have stated. We moved here for a specific reason. One thing that popped up as we walked in, uh, Mr. Dingy brought up the little circle with the little line. That line goes directly into my property. So you obviously can tell that I have a little bit of a uh an objection to that, right? So we're gonna add seventeen, we're gonna add all this kind of stuff, and then we're gonna add a road that potentially goes directly into my property. I'm gonna watch those cars come in and out right in front where I'm raising my family, where I have my dogs, you know? And that's something that I did not move to Chino Valley for, was to just watch a line of cars move. And that line, the the one you brought up, hit right here. Which I believe that one might be one. Right, I mean, you, you, you hit it, right? So that's, that's near and dear to my heart because there was a reason we chose where we chose. Um, obviously, expansion's gonna happen, but it doesn't have to happen at the expense of the people who have been here for a long time. So I just want you guys to realize that I am one person that lives right there, directly impacted by the decisions that are being made today. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, no, sir. You've had your opportunity. Thank you. Uh, James Holt.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Uh, I'm providing some water resource uh consultation to Mr. Nell and to uh, uh, to Adam on this project. Uh, I just wanted to maybe mention a couple of things. If the supply of water shifts from individual exempt wells to the town of Chino, the owner will still need to have a certificate of assured water supply. And that certificate of assured water supply will simply designate the town of Chino as the provider as opposed to the individual exempt wells. Recognizing that the water supply was a sufficient distance from the property originally, that seemed like the right strategy to pursue. So we'll need to make some adjustments if that's where we end up going. Relative to the application for assured water supply, I might draw your attention to attachment B in your packet, which are comments from Mark Holmes, your water consultant. Uh, I know Mark. I've known Mark for a long time. Uh, I have a very high regard for Mark, and I agree with every one of his comments in this attachment. Uh, the property owner has, in fact, already had a pre-application meeting with Department of Water Resources and has also already submitted an application for assured water supply based on individual residential exempt wells. Uh, it's our expectation that that certificate uh may be issued within perhaps uh four to eight weeks. So when we move forward with respect to a subdivision approval, we will have that certification in hand. The other thing I was also gonna mention that Mark points out, and that is uh an examination of the water quality in this area. We did uh gather a water quality sample from a well that's about twenty feet from the north boundary of this property. And the water quality, as is true in much of Chino Valley, was extraordinarily good. There were no exceedances. We looked at a hundred and twenty-one different components in that analysis. That analysis was also supplied to the Arizona Department of Water Resources. So uh, we'll support you in any way we can. If the town chooses to uh negotiate an agreement with the property owner to supply water for this property, uh, the impact on the aquifer will remain essentially the same, whether or not the town's providing the water or if the water's being provided from the individual exempt wells. There is a uh deep aquifer at this location, uh, and I'll just mention real quickly that the Department of Water Resources model, groundwater model for this location indicates that in a hundred years, the water level will drop approximately a hundred and forty feet. And that's based on all current demand as well as the additional demand for this project. What this project adds to that hundred-and-forty-foot decline in the water level is less than one foot. It's about seven-tenths of a foot. So this project is not going to significantly affect the decline in water level, which we'll be experiencing. So I can help, uh, if you have any questions about that as well. Thank you.
I, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
If the town decides to get into an agreement with the developer to run the water line, and that means the town of Chino Valley would be the water provider for the one-hundred-year assured water supply.
Yes.
We would be depleting our water portfolio to, not totally depleting it, but our water portfolio would be decreased by the amount of money, by, by the amount of water we're supplying for you. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's.
What the town frequently.
I'm just, I'm just bringing the point is that someone's gonna have to pay for the water somehow.
Absolutely. And and what the town would frequently do in this circumstance is Department of Water Resources would require uh extinguishment credits, uh, which then satisfy the department that a sufficient quantity of water has been made available for this new demand that the town would then satisfy. So, yeah, that would need to be negotiated as well. But, yeah, that's how that normally would uh play out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Nancy Thomas.
Hi, my name is Nancy Thomas. I am actually the seven-acre property that is the biggest one that's in this whole section right here that you're talking about on Red Cinder Road. It's kind of got the arrow shape there. Um, if you're doing that circle, just like the other gentleman was talking about, I do appreciate all of my other neighbors speaking out. Um, that would put that other loop that you're having come out on that property right at a blind corner. So I actually walk my dogs around that corner, and we've almost been run over several times by neighbors coming through that corner. So having that extra section where it's coming out would actually be into Tom Truba's very driveway. So that's not a good option. Um, I'm totally against this. You guys allowed a property that forty-four Perkinsville subdivision put in. You didn't have them improve any roads. There's no way that you can walk on the roads. I don't know what roads you guys drive, but if you drive down Road Three, it's not wide enough for two cars. So if you're gonna allow something like this, just like you allowed something on the other corner, you should have asked them or required them to improve the roads. There's no place for people to walk. There's no sidewalks. The roads aren't wide enough. You can't even drive down Road One to get to, or past the school to get to Safeway. And that road is just a washboard. So totally against this. You guys are not supporting the neighbors. This is not something that should be put in. I've got several potholes in front of my yard that every once in a while someone comes by and just throws a bunch of asphalt on. So this is not appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, I'm gonna close the public portion of this meeting. And we will move forward with questions for town staff. So I'm gonna just go down through here and ask some questions, and then the commission can certainly chime in at any point. So some of the comments I've heard is the density, different route for the sewer, recharge credits. We might need to explain that a little better. Most people seem to favor the One East entrance. And there is um questions about road improvement. So Will, can you maybe address um, some of the water recharge business a little bit? Chicken.
That would, that would probably be me, Mr. Chair. Uh, as far as the, the recharge credits themselves, I think what the, the citizen might have been talking about is if you pretty much correct that if you hook up to water but not sewer, it loses the opportunity for recharge credit because well, the way the town operates the sewer system, all the water that gets processed through the town, we don't use what they call purple pipe to repurpose water or reuse it on golf courses or parks or anything like that. We directly uh recharge the water into the aquifer through permits from the state. And the town does receive credits for that recharge that they can then use for their legal, I call it the paper water portfolio, uh, and reuse that. So any, if it, if the homes are on septic, there's not that ability. Septic tanks do not recharge down to the aquifer. The town has the ability to do that through their system with the sewer. So that's an advantage of being hooked onto sewer. Is, I guess, the best way to explain that.
So, um, the gentleman came up and spoke about water. If the town supplies water, they basically lose part of their portfolio that can't be brought back again. Am I correct?
Not necessarily, because the way, at least for my recommendation as town engineer, I would never recommend the town provide the paper water for a subdivision on their own. Uh, the town has provided those. Uh, the town has provided those credits before, but at a cost. By ordinance, the town sells water credits out of their portfolio. The current price is twenty-five thousand dollars for an acre foot for a hundred-year supply. So, an acre foot unit is twenty-five thousand dollars a unit. If the developer wanted to purchase those water credits, that's a deal between the developer and council. But as far as the town providing the paper water, I would never recommend the town do that unilaterally. But, um, the, what, the physical supply of water, town has the ability through their service area, right, to supply water, um, with it, if it's within six hundred and sixty feet of an existing line. So, we would have to look at the legal implications as to how far the subdivision is and what sort of right the town has to deliver water. Um, so, as far as the state's concerned, it's just the delivery method would change between a exempt well and the town's supply. There's a few things that probably Mr. Holt's better qualified to answer as far as wells, they look at about four hundred feet deep, and the town's supply, they look at about a thousand feet deep. So, we go deeper. Um, and to, to be honest, a lot of wells can actually, at some point, impact the town's ability to pump water because we have to take into account exempt wells when we're doing physical availability studies and not impact that four hundred-foot level. So, it's easier for us, as a town, for our own deep well drilling needs to, to have less exempt wells, from that perspective, from an engineering perspective. Um, I'm not saying we should make everybody get rid of their wells. I don't wanna start that, but.
So.
But there's, there are two different components there. There's the legal water and then the physical water supply.
Okay, go ahead Commissioners.
So, in other words, the town may be able to supply water without using paper water and without using credits. Just supply.
Right, for this, for the certificate of assured water supply, there needs to be the legal paper water. Where that comes from is up to negotiation, but again, I've never seen the town provide credits without charging them.
But they may not have to go that route.
Yeah, the, typically, the developers bring the credits, the paper water.
So, they would, if I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but if the developer agreed to bring town water forward, he would basically buy that water and then somehow his assured water supply would be signed over to the town?
Right.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's how that would work.
And then according to Mr. Holt, who has spoke before us before, whether it's, whether it's the town water or private wells, it's really drawing from the same aquifer.
Correct, at, at different levels, but yes.
Correct.
Um, like I said.
And then the money the town makes on the water helps with infrastructure.
Right, and to advocate for town utilities as well, just the fact of being on a meter is a conservation measure in itself. As far as conservation goes, so.
Anybody else have questions for staff while they're up there?
Um. I, I would just like to, I would just like to thank Frank for, uh, the diligence he took in, uh, identifying the roads and all the road improvements the developer's gonna have to do.
Yeah, that was a question I was going to have you clarify. Somebody mentioned that the roads at the Perkinsville Forty-four, nothing has actually been done out on the road rightaways. That doesn't necessarily mean that the road rightaway dedication things that were set when the subdivision was approved aren't going to get done. They're just not done yet. Can you clarify that?
Much to my chagrin. Uh, they are obligated to improve both Perkinsville Road and One East, including sidewalks. Perkinsville Road will have a ten-foot pathway along it. They're not, it's, it will get done. There is, there are, uh, legal assurances or bonds, if you will, that those will be completed, that, that we have in place at this time. We have a hundred and ten percent assurances that, that they'll, uh, perform those.
Subdivision offers the same dedications and rightaways and improvements.
Right, Will, can you go to the, do we have the stipulations? If you look at, uh, number five, for example, is Road One East, nineteen-foot minimum asphalt paved road section, concrete curb and gutter, and a five-foot sidewalk along One East is what we're recommending. And then the others are, uh, for local, for Red Cinder and for local roads.
So, Red Cinder, if they still empty out onto One East, that will still be developed. The road will be improved there. Am I correct?
Right. The only one.
Widen the road and improving what is a nasty corner.
Right, the, the, the only rightaway that we're not recommending approval at this time is, uh, the Three North alignment, which some citizens did mention is an option, so, so that could be a potential option to look at. Just, it's, it's not an improved rightaway now, but there is some rightaway there in that alignment.
So, that could possibly entail into this subdivision. And it's, it's, it's an improvement, but.
It could.
Some discussion about.
It wasn't required at this time, and the reason was, um, because the alignment at Three North, if you continue to the east.
Well, it doesn't go any further.
It, yeah, it, it could connect to Perkinsville Road, but you have to get through the Santa Cruz Wash, and that's millions of dollars to cross that, so. I don't think Three North could ever conceivably be a, uh, network road like an arterial type road. It would probably be more of a local road, just much like Red Cinder, where it doesn't go across the wash.
There was also, oh, go ahead.
Speaking of the roads, what, what does the town prefer, the two cul-de-sacs or the loop?
The loop.
The town prefers the loop.
We can discuss other options as far as where the entry points and exits are, but, but two cul-de-sacs is, is not, I'd rather have a loop road with the, the two different exits. Makes more sense.
So.
There's less turning around and everything of all the school buses and the garbage trucks and all of that.
So, um, the Three North right away, even though it only goes the length of the forty-four subdivision, that could possibly be something on the table for that?
Could. I wouldn't wanna rule it out.
Okay.
And then, if you did the loop, how much of Red Cinder would get improved?
That's right there.
Uh, it, what we have is item number six. Sorry for getting too close. Uh, so, any portion of Red Cinder that fronts the property.
So, it would stop at the bend?
Would have a twelve-inch minimum pavement for a lane width. So, it's, I work on half widths of road, so their side of the road, they would need to build a lane plus a five-foot shoulder, and a, and a roadside ditch, the bar ditch is what we call those. So, it would actually be wider than it is now, um, provide that shoulder. It's a rural road section, so it doesn't require sidewalks. But that five-foot shoulder would give someone a place to, if their car broke down, move over, or someone's walking to kinda get out of the travel lane a little bit.
Um, one of the people from the public spoke about a possible alternate sewer route to the north by flattening things out. Can you maybe comment on that?
I can try. I don't understand what they meant by a water station. I don't know of any.
I think, I think the individual intended to talk about the lift station.
Oh, the lift station. Right, if you, and that's how, actually how you would run it. The, the general fall of the land is from southeast to, or southwest to northeast. So, if you're looking at the map, from the bottom left to the top right, is how the land flows there generally. So, what you do is you just put the lift station at the bottom point of the subdivision, the low point, and then have a force main, which is basically a pressurized pipe, like a water pipe, back to wherever you tie into your sewer.
It was mentioned to go to the north and to the east.
Right, but there's, there's no sewer to the north and east.
Okay, I know that. I want, I would like for you to explain.
Oh, okay.
Why that alternate route probably wouldn't be any more feasible than the one that's along Road One East.
Right, to go to the northeast, you would run, well, you could gravity feed down Red Cinder all the way to the wash if we had rightaway. Would be the, the ideal engineering solution there.
From that sub, from that subdivision.
Yeah, but again, expenses.
There's no rightaways. Nothing's ever been dedicated.
I'm not sure we have contiguous rightaway all the way to the, to the, the sewer main is in the wash, basically.
There's a property at the end of Red Cinder Road that is a ranch, called Almost a Ranch.
We'd have to acquire that, or, or like I said, run up to some other road where we have rightaway, and you're talking miles of, uh, sewer main. At some point in the future, it may make sense if the town builds up the sewer network enough. But, uh, to get sewer back down to the closest physical point at Perkinsville, you would either have to, uh, find an easement somewhere between the Perkinsville Forty-four development and the nursery, or, uh, tie in, come back out to One East and pump it under pressure down to Perkinsville.
Okay.
Cause actually, uh, Perkinsville Forty-four had trouble tying in to Perkinsville.
Yeah, I watched that.
So, they had to run a parallel line down Perkinsville Road to catch grade, and they're, they've got some manholes twenty feet deep or more. And when you get really deeper than ten feet, it starts adding extra cost. They actually break out, when we do bids, if it's deeper than ten or fifteen feet, typically, we will build out extra bid items for the extra foot of excavation because it's a lot more trench protection and backhoes can't reach deeper than fifteen feet.
A foot thing can.
It could go up.
Okay, um.
But it's possible. Sorry, sorry Chair.
There was some questions about traffic. Um, I know that the curves, two curves on Red Cinder Road are not really very safe. Um, I actually live back in that area. And the lady that talked about walking her dogs, I've passed her many times, and you have to be careful when you're going around that one corner because the trees are planted right out on the very edge of the road, and there's nothing there but the road and then the trees. Can you just talk a little bit about traffic and that sort of business?
Right, typically, there's sixteen lots proposed, Will?
Sixteen to seven, with a potential seventeen.
So, that's, for traffic engineering, you anticipate ten trips per day per household for a single family on average, so that would add a hundred and, uh, sixty trips per day if that's my calculation. That, it seems like a lot, but when you consider garbage trucks or UPS guys delivering that sort of thing, that's, that's where traffic engineers get that.
They even use Red Cinder.
Ten per day. I'm sorry?
That's if they even use Red Cinder.
Well, that's, that would be the numbers generated by the subdivision, no matter where it goes.
Correct, but.
If it goes out on One East, that's a main thoroughfare.
Right, then you divide that up by the entrances, and so we could do a, a traffic impact statement. Um, it's really not at a level to do a full-blown analysis, but we could have them, uh, have a traffic engineer do some, some rough numbers as far as the, the impacts of traffic on those roads. Uh, Red Cinder is a local road, probably, I would assume, less than twenty-four feet wide at this point. I haven't measured it, but a, a lot of local roads are, even Two North is only about twenty feet wide in some places. So, it gets tight when you have some of the, especially some of the, no offense to the pickup owners these days, but a duly's pretty wide.
Hey, wait a minute, I have three dualies.
And a lot of people around here have them because that's the, the area we live in, so it's hard to pull horses without a duly.
Exactly right. So, I'm gonna kinda break protocol here a minute, just to clarify something because I think this will become important later. I'm gonna walk up to the map right up there. All right, now, do we have other questions for town staff? We may still call you back.
Sure. Um, if I could make one, just in clarification for the circulation element that was proposed, the.
Okay.
Um, i- i- it's purely conceptual. Uh, this was just, the lines are completely insignificant as, as far as currently where they shoot out into, um, adjacent properties. This is just something thrown together to illustrate the perspective that the applicant and developer is open to dialogue of, they're, they're not stuck with the two cul-de-sac.
Can we go back to the map that showed it emptying on Perkins, on, uh, Red Cinder?
Sure.
Okay, so, I completely agree that putting this right there is not a very safe or desirable spot, even though the town engineer disagrees with me. I understand why he's saying it because having cul-de-sacs is not top of the line either. So, I would like to see if this goes down that road, some exploration for the Three North, short distance of that. That rightaway explored is an alternate route out. I think the Red Cinder one is not really very safe. I drive that road a lot, and you have to pay attention every day just going in and out.
And if I may clarify, Mr. Chair, I wasn't commenting on the Red Cinder, just the loop aspect.
No, I get that. I understand why you did that, and I, I agree with you. I would like to see two ways out of it also, but I think that one would be more of a danger than the two cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, we definitely need to look at it if that's the one, but understood your comments on the Three North, and like I said, I think that should be something that's explored.
And the Three North might even make more sense because most traffic is probably heading south.
Right. It might lead to a little extra expense because we would have to build more than half the road. You can't just build half a road, so.
Then, and that's, but it's a, it's a more of a, it's more of a legitimate expense, I think.
I think it's worth exploration.
Yes, I would agree. Okay, Will, did you say everything you needed to say?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I have one question, Will. Chuck made a point of that he was outside of the six-hundred-foot notification area. Everyone that was at the neighborhood meeting was within the six-hundred-foot or?
No.
Close enough?
Uh, there were several that fell outside of the six-hundred-foot.
Several fell outside, oh.
Um, excuse me. Uh, within the neighborhood meeting site here, uh, the map on the bottom right-hand corner is the six-hundred-foot, uh, mailing radius and the resulting generated mailing list. Uh, the neigh, the map located directly above it, uh, with the shaded parcels are all those that attended the neighborhood meeting. Bar one individual who was located in Mesa View, um, would make the map too ridiculous.
So, seven of the me, people at the meeting were outside of the six-hundred-foot? Am I seeing that correctly?
Correct.
Seven.
Correct, yes sir.
Seven out of the eleven, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
One other, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just that when it's appropriate, maybe, the only other note I took down was something about the less than one acre that was mentioned.
Yeah, there was some discussion about why rightaways were, and some confusion about which lots get rightaways taken out of them. If we could clarify that, that would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, Will, you mentioned some properties less than one acre that have one acre zoning? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh, Will, you mentioned some properties less than one acre that have one acre zoning? Okay, the, where that came up in a previous topic was not necessarily having to do with specifically water and sewer, it's the entitlements of the one acre that, and it's actually in our code somewhere. I just apologize, the computer's slow and I couldn't find it in the code, but that goes to, Will, help me out, that if, if the right of way, if a property was one acre and then right of way was acquired later on, the town has to allow them those entitlements or else it would be a prop two oh seven issue, right?
The, the nexus is that it result, revolves around the ability to su- further subdivide a piece of property. So if you had two acres, you'd, um, with SR one zoning, you dedicate right of way, it puts you at one point eight. You still have the entitlements of a two acre whole parcel, so you could subdivide into respective half of, I should have chosen easier number, um, point nine, roughly acre lot.
You mean like a whole bunch of them I see on this map?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can you explain the proposition two oh seven, just for people that aren't familiar with it?
So as the fifty thousand foot view of this, um, a prop two oh seven is essentially a taking, um, can be from essentially a government taking of entitlements or land or anything from private property without just compensation. So essentially if the town, just for example, um, Perkinsville forty-four, if the town decided unilaterally, we are going to ex-nay Perkinsville forty-four, rezone it to AR five. That would be a taking candidate for two oh seven. They could essentially sue the town for millions and then still get to build and we write them a check.
Plus there, from our discussion a few weeks ago, the attorney's fees are paid for by the town.
Abs- after, everything's paid for by the town at the end.
Okay, um, also another question for Will. When, when we're looking at this stuff, there's something in the U D O and you'll have to help me out with this, where we do buffer zones between high density and acreage. Is that correct?
It's, I don't believe it's codified. It, it is a policy of good planning practice to um, create buffers in between hi- high densities, transitional zoning, um, within the new general plan. I'll do a little plug here on the new general plan. Those, those are gonna be policies intended to be within that document, so it's not just a staff versus public situation, but i- it is definitely best planning practice to have buffering or transitionary zoning.
So in your opinion, would this qualify as a buffering property going from seven thousand square foot lots to one acre lots to the other acreages that are around there?
In a perfect world, you'd probably have quarter, half acre from the south and progressively getting larger, but at one acre, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just uh, someone from the audience spoke about if you did water only, there'd be some kind of state repercussions or negatives. Is there anything negative to the town about doing water only, town water only to the project?
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, and Mr. Chair. That, I think that's where I tried to answer about.
That was the, that was the town signing over the, the hundred year water supply.
Tax implications or anything like that or?
Hmm, hmm, not really, that, that I know of, I don't wanna, I might, I don't know everything, so um, but as, best I could tell, that was just for losing the opportunity of receiving the recharge credits if you don't run sewer.
Just one last thing for the record, I voted twice against the Perkinsville forty-four project.
Okay, so, any more questions? Alright, um, thank you, Will. We may call you back up. So now's an opportunity for the applicant to come up and speak to some of the questions, if you'd please like to do so.
Yeah, I think we got everything, um, everything pretty much nailed down. Something to reiterate is that whether it is whether it is Red Cinder or the road to the south that becomes the access or a secondary ingress egress point for the subdivision, it will be improved. That's, Red Cinder is in pretty poor condition. And if we were to use that, it would get a new course of pavement on our side and then a graded shoulder. And then also, not really kind of associated with this, but those trees in the corner aren't really doing anybody any favors. Not us or the public, so that's something that's been talked about getting out just to improve the safety of that. On the water, so if we did water without sewer, uh, we would be, or if we do water in any case, we'll be, it'll be uh, incumbent upon us to purchase extinguishment credits and at the price that Frank said, it would be pretty expensive that uh, to purchase the legal or the paper water we'd need for the usage of this subdivision would be right at four hundred thousand dollars, given that twenty-five thousand dollar an acre, acre foot you quoted earlier. We'd be right around that four hundred thousand dollar mark, so that might be the, the legal water aspect might be more of a sticking point than the uh, the physical availability of the water or the construction of the water lines.
Um, would you have any heartburn with doing the uh, going to the road three easement to the south was an alternate egress?
No, and I, I can't remember if we talked about that in early P A C meetings or if there was some, I don't know, I think the town had a stance that it, it didn't really, it didn't see it going through and so we went to Red Cinder as the the easier option, but no, we could definitely explore im- improvements of uh, improvements of that road and I believe the owner of this property dedicated, I believe, twenty-five feet uh, right of way to the town in the maybe the early two thousands and I believe Perkinsville forty-four also dedicated it, so I think the town owns owns a roadway width of road down there. And uh, we could look at what it would take to develop it to get access coming up through that point. And then, and definitely really choose our road, our Road One East access wisely. And uh, situation, situation it's, situate it to have the least impact as it could on the neighboring, neighboring households and neighboring households, so it's gonna have the least effect as it can.
Anybody else have questions?
I just have one comment that um, if you did have to spend this four hundred thousand for the credits, that would add twenty-five thousand dollars per lot.
Per lot, yes.
Sixteen lots, four hundred thousand.
Yes.
So, it's, it's gonna be a cost one way or the other.
What's that?
I said it's gonna be a cost one way or the other.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, there was a comment made about profit on total sales of properties. Profit only comes after all the cost or um, taken out of whatever it is you're doing. And so taking the whole number of a five hundred thousand dollar property and calling that a profit, unless I misunderstood what was said, isn't really the way profit works. Profit works after your debt to the project is satisfied and then what's left over out of that is your profit, which is your payment for taking a risk for doing business. So just to clarify that. Alright, so.
Mr. Chair, may I make one more comment? Sorry. If I can go back on the uh, three north uh, subject. Three north alignment if, having trouble see, oh, there we go. So just to make sure, we would have to make sure there's sufficient right of way.
In that one parcel of property.
Right, there's an additional parcel that we may need to explore and make sure we could get enough width through there, so I just wanna point that out as well.
Okay, but, but it's more than likely
Definitely worth looking at.
Opportunity for doing something better than the Red Cinder.
Right.
Exit.
Just a challenge.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this item. So, um, just a brief comment before we go to the motion. There was some things said about density. All of these one acre parcels, including my two point eight five acre parcel, all started out as a great big parcel. And over the years, because people wanted to move here and have a place to live, those properties were divided and split and divided and split to where we have some of these that are point nine acres, point three six, point five five, zero point nine. Um, the density issue, in my mind, this whole place is surrounded by mobile homes and one acre parcels. Not everyone is a mobile home and not everyone is a one acre parcel. But the density thing, they all started out as bigger parcels than what the fives and the sevens and the twenties are now. And yeah, I like my rural atmosphere. I like it a lot. I've lived here for, lived in Chino Valley for over twenty years, on that piece of property for eighteen years. Like it a lot. But also, I realize that this town is gonna develop to a certain degree. This man has taken a big step forward in putting site-built homes on this, when we've seen plenty of mobile home deals and nothing against mobile homes, I happen to live in one of them. But site-built homes are always a, a great addition to an area. So, I just wanna point out that the density thing is kind of a non-starter in my opinion. Okay, so we're at a point now where we're gonna entertain a motion. And so I'm gonna put it to the commission to take care of that, please.
My question, uh, the developed services director is, do we make a motion or if we wanna see the, the water issue and the road issue advance first?
Stipulations as part of the motion. Is that correct?
But, but if we wanna see these items go forward before changing the zoning? In other words, I'm opposed to changing the zoning until I see the, see what's possible with the project. Or what the developer's willing to do.
Usually you would put a stipulation, a condition in there that needs to be satisfied. So like when you guys were talking about water, I wrote one because I didn't know if you were gonna ask for it. The owner shall enter into discussion with the town about sharing costs of installing a water line to the project.
We can stipulate that he will do that though, correct?
Enter into discussion.
Yes.
It doesn't mean that it will end up that way with a, with a, yes, he's gonna do that. I mean, he might be willing to do it and maybe the town doesn't have the money.
Correct, but can this be postponed or tabled until those questions are answered?
Usually it doesn't work that way. He's not gonna get the zoning until he satisfies whatever the conditions are. In terms of the streets and where he has access, this isn't about the subdivision at this point. This is about rezoning. So this would come back to you as a preliminary plat and a final plat. So if you don't want the rezoning, this is where you stop it. If you're okay with the rezoning and you just have issues or questions about the design of the subdivision, that's where you deal with those issues.
Which is traditionally how we've done it in the past.
Correct.
We can put a time limit on this? Or does that come in in the final plat or the plats?
Well, I'm used to doing time limits. It's just that the state law changed, so I'm, now I've got attorneys in my head talking to me about whether you can or can't do that. I mean, you could put a, you could put a time limit on the rezon.
The reason is, is we've seen in the past here many times where we've done some rezon on a subdivision and it just sits there and nothing happens and then things change and and we no longer have control over something and the circumstances have changed from when it was approved. And we could put a generous timeframe on it, but that makes it more imperative to come to the table and do things. And what in your opinion would be a generous timeframe for something like this? Five years? So some of the things that we talked about that could possibly be stipulations before we make a motion is hooking into town water to, to at least make a determined effort to do that, a stipulation as part of the approval. Traffic impact. Um, it wasn't a study, what was that word you used? Statement, that was it.
Statement.
Uh, pursuing the three north right of way as opposed to the Red Cinder option. And then a five-year time limit for the zoning change and was there anything else? That we might wanna use as a stipulation?
I, I think those stipulations are all points of discussion that the applicant has with the town. Is that correct?
They're points of discussion for us to send approval, of our approval to the town council. That there has to be addressed. This is what we want to see happen in order for the zoning to stand. Do you agree with my wordage?
So usually a condition is a requirement, not a, we're gonna test it out. So the condition that I read to you was the owner will enter into discussion. If you were, if you were requiring him to hook up to town water, you would say the developer shall hook up to town water. But if you're giving him the ability to explore that, because quite frankly, you don't have the authority to tell him to hook up because the town has to decide if, yeah.
And I understand because the town may not want to do that.
But if it comes back to preliminary plat, that can be addressed at that time.
So that's why some of these comments really belong on a plat as opposed to the rezoning.
Alright, so let's write that baby out.
I think I can get it, Chuck. If you want me to attempt it.
Hammer right on it. I'll write down what you're saying.
Okay. Move to approve zone change, Z C two oh two three zero one is presented, subject to staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval and attachment A. With the stipulation that the developer enter into discussions with the town of Chino about connecting, possible connection to town water service. Alignment of Road Three North for possible access, ingress egress access. Uh, possible traffic s- statement. And a five-year time limit on the zoning.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Was that sufficient?
I'll second.
We can always amend it.
Right, the time limit is usually a standalone condition.
So.
And it sounded like all the others were discussions with possible number of things.
With a, with an absolute five-year time.
With a requirement for a five-year time.
Okay, so you wanna modify that? Don't have to say the whole thing, just modify the.
With the modification that the five-year time limit is mandatory.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Welker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn? Your microphone needs to be on.
Oh, no.
No, sorry.
Commissioner Zamudia?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna explain our vote. Traditionally, it was always the no vote. They got to talk, but I felt that that was unfair, so I changed the rule and made it so each person will explain their vote. So we'll have people explain it in the order that you called the roll call, please.
Commissioner.
Uh, wait a minute, before you start, for the audience, the reason we're doing this is so town council knows what each commissioner is thinking. So when it goes before town. So when it goes before town council, they'll know why the commission person, commissioner, whatever, voted the way they did.
Commissioner Welker?
Uh, the subject property fits as a buffer to buffer between the seven thousand square feet and the, the other, others.
Commissioner Penn?
I said no because I think more consideration should be given to people that have purchased property over the years, knowing what the zoning was of the various lots in the area. And in most cases, that's why they purchased the lots. The Perkinsville forty-four, they received zoning approval in April of twenty eighteen. Chino Valley's a very different town from twenty eighteen. And I think property should be looked at differently today.
Thank you. Commissioner Zamudia?
I feel he satisfied the requirements for the land. And when you buy property, nothing's guaranteed. You don't control someone else's property and you don't tell them what to do with it. It fits within what the development is currently, and so I feel that he is, is correct and he should move forward with the way his plans are.
Commissioner Switzer?
I think the zoning change fits with the surrounding property. It does fit with the current general plan and it also fits with the potentially upcoming general plan. With the stipulations, I think if the proper preliminary plat comes forward, it could be a good project for the surrounding area and even for the folks on red cinder without impacting their properties, uh, to a great extent.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Well, I, I agree with everything that has been said for this development. But in addition to that, I would like to add that, um, you know, your view on your prop, that you get with your property only extends to your property line. The fact that you might have twenty acres from front of you that has nothing on it, that isn't gonna be there forever and if you wanna have it stay that way, well then buy the twenty acres, so. You know, a view is just a view and it doesn't go with your deed to your property. Comments about the conditions of the road, town's been aware of the conditions of the roads since twenty fourteen when they had a resolution to develop a priority of roadway improvement and, and maintenance. And then additionally, in two thousand nineteen, they had a resolution to have a tax specifically for road improvement and that was voted down. So, I think the developer improving their half of the road is good for the town and hopefully we can maintain it.
Okay.
With the money we have because nobody wants to vote for an increase in tax.
Thank you. Chair Merritt?
So, everything that everybody else said except for the no vote, I agree with. I also believe that it's unreasonable to expect large parcels of land, which this one isn't really even a large parcel, will stay undeveloped. If you look around on that map right there, it's surrounded by one acre parcels or less. Those people moved here just like we all did when we moved here and the new people have a right to do the very same thing. If, if the citizens of Chino Valley do not want any more development in town, then they need to own or control the property and the only way to control it is to own it. As far as the roads, tax money is what makes the roads get improved, gas tax and then also other taxes which the town engineer is very familiar with cuz he fights a losing battle every year to take care of roads that nobody wants to pay for but want to complain about a lot. We hear at every zoning meeting. This is a great project with site-built homes, the possibility of town water. And I just don't know what else other than spending an extraordinarily large amount of money to put sewer there. The guy could have done any better than he did, especially with the stipulations that we placed on there. So that's why I voted. And also why I showed you where I live because I'm putting my mouth where my wallet's at. So, we're gonna move forward to item E.
Excuse me, Chair.
That would be a good idea. The poor lady's probably asleep out there. Thank you. Welcome back, Commissioner Metters. Okay, so we're gonna move forward to item E one, which is a staff report on prior cases to town council.
Alright. Excuse me, good evening again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. Uh, the last item that went before the commission was the preliminary plat for the Homestead subdivision located at the northwest side of town to south of the slaughterhouse on South Road One West. Uh, it received a three-three, three in favor, three against vote from council and it essentially died.
Is there any hope for that thing to be resurrected if the guy did some other stuff?
I, I have a question for you, well, specifically on this. The quorum for the town council was seven members, correct?
The mayor was participating for a brief period. He had had surgery, which is actually nobody's business.
Right.
But he wasn't able to maintain his, his connection.
But he was part of the quorum when the meeting started?
When the meeting started, but he, he left before that case.
Alright. So the quorum has not completed their vote, so technically on a parliamentary procedure, this should be unfinished business that is brought up at the next time.
No, that's not how that works.
It doesn't work that way?
Nope.
So his, his vote is just?
Well, when he left, he, they had a quorum. They had a quorum without him.
Oh, you're correct. You're correct. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna go back to my question. Is there any hope for this poor soul?
So, um, we have discussed this with the town attorney as far as what the options for this individual is. He can, one, get one of the no votes, two, change their position by the next council meeting, which is next Tuesday. Or?
No, it's not to change their vote, it's to reconsider the action.
Correct.
Can you explain that in English?
So, so if three people voted no, which they did, and he talks to the, all three of them and one of them says, yeah, I'll agree to reconsider the case, then it goes back on the council agenda for the council to reconsider the case. It doesn't mean that the person that says, I will recon, that, that brings it forward to reconsider is changing their vote.
Just brings it up for more discussion. Got, got it.
What was the P and Z vote on that?
Four-three. Oh, no, excuse me, it was five-two. The rezoning was four-three. Whenever it came back for the preliminary plat, it was four, five-two.
Okay, about C U P twenty twenty-two dash oh one?
Alrighty, now this is a fun one. So this C U P twenty twenty-two oh one was the conditional use permit for the equine rescue on Fire Sky Lane. So, when this went to council, council granted it a conditional approval of, with all the conditions, but modified the time limit from twelve months down to six months for complete compliance. Their six months is up on June thirteenth. In order to get it on to the subsequent planning commission, which is where it was directed back to, our next planning commission, traditional scheduled planning commission meeting lands on July fourth. We will not be holding that traditional meeting, so it gets bumped to August. So, staff, um, would like to bring up the topic of potentially having a special meeting in July. If the commission is open to it, we can coordinate that post-meeting. Um, just looking for feedback on that. If that's something the commission is amenable to, otherwise it'll get bumped to August. Uh, I can say at this point in time, the applicant is not in compliance with his conditions. He is approximately shy on roughly three, um, with one of them being the business license, which we would not issue until concurrently with the approval for the conditional use permit. He is still short on shade structures for the animals as well as the manure control, um, has left some to be desired. Staff believes that it is a little, it is too much for them to handle at this point in time.
How, what, how's the commission feel about that? Now, another question, because I didn't participate. Would I be allowed to participate on that portion of the meeting?
As long as you've read the minutes or watched the meetings, you can participate.
So I'd have to go back and, but I wasn't, I didn't vote because I wasn't here.
Or you could choose to step down and then you don't have to go through all that stuff and let, let your acting chair take over. So you either have to be well-versed in it, so it's like you watch the meeting, all, both meetings, or all three meetings? They were very long.
Holy moly.
Yes. So it's, it's not just the planning commission meetings, you'd have to watch, you would also have to watch council meetings.
So, can I, I'm gonna do something maybe oddball here. How does the commission feel about me participating if I did watch all those meetings?
I would encourage it.
I'm afraid you would say that. Okay. Um, well, can you pick a date?
We can coordinate after. I, I can't set anything right now. We'll send out potentials.
Well, you got me all fired up.
There you go. There you go.
Just what, I guess let everybody know what can be a consensus date.
Absolutely.
Hopefully pick a Tuesday night, maybe the one after the original meeting.
And that's a council meeting.
Third Tuesday, if anything, potentially Wednesdays.
But stay on Tuesday, cuz otherwise I'm not gonna be able to attend.
Alright, um, I will send out an email, uh, probably tomorrow, if not Thursday at the latest, to discuss potential date times. All the following protocol, so.
We just need to make sure that the chambers are available.
Yeah, that's the big piece.
Okay, just, we'll just work it out. And then something about the general plan?
Oh, something about the general plan. So, we are having, um, I don't know the right word. We're having an apex moment in June. So all of the meetings that have been happening with all of the community, the planning commission, the council, the steering committee are coming to a head in June. We are in June. So tomorrow, the steering committee meets. It is not a, an open meeting. It's a meeting where they will work with us and the consultants to develop the plan based on thirty-nine pages now, I think, of comments. The steering committee will go through every single comment that was received and discuss whether they will make a recommendation to change either the land use map or the text of the general plan for each comment. And then what comes out of that is the plan that goes before the planning commission and the council as the public hearing plan. So, the planning commission and the council have a joint work session on the twelfth with the consultants. That is a public meeting. And then, a week after that, two weeks after that, on the twenty-sixth, the planning commission has their official public hearing for the general plan. And the twenty-seventh, the council has their meeting on the general plan. So if that is voted, um, approved by council, then it goes on the ballot for the public to review and approve in November. The key is, either you get the current plan or you get the new plan. You don't get to not have a plan.
Gotta have a plan one way.
So, so we either keep the current one or we get the new one. And so that's a choice that the public makes in November on the ballot.
So if it gets voted down, the current plan just stays in effect.
Correct, and then we start over again. Because every ten years, we have to have an updated plan and in twenty twenty-four...
Start the whole thing over again.
And did you say we have a joint session on the twelfth of this month?
Yes.
What day is that?
Monday. Sorry.
What time?
Six.
And then on the twenty-sixth, we have it come back to?
Come back here and you guys have your special public hearing on the general plan.
On the twenty-sixth?
Six.
Twenty-sixth, which is a Monday.
Six P M?
Yes.
Guys had to pick Monday, yeah?
Sorry.
Blame the, uh, state statute. Blame, blame the state statute.
Yeah, we're, from the election date, we have to work backwards to the last date the council could make a decision. And then between the steering committee and the work that they're gonna be doing and the meeting with you and the council, the consultant team has to redo a lot of things or is going to be making changes, which means the document that we've all been reviewing is going to be different. Maybe not significantly, but one change causes a lot of changes throughout the document, so.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, so now, this is an opportunity for any member of the commission to have their say about anything that's on their mind that has to do with planning and zoning. Anybody like to speak?
I'll miss the meeting the twenty-sixth.
Pardon?
I'll miss the meeting the twenty-sixth. I'll be out of the country.
Chicken. Anything else? Giving me that look. You wanna say something?
Just thanks everybody for showing up.
Yep, that's what happened tonight.
Public participation is a must to have dialogue and find out what's going on in this town.
Anybody else? Alright, so now comes the part where the chairman gets to talk. I'm not gonna have much to say tonight. Yeah, except for one thing. Seems to me that it's kinda been coming up frequently about, um, profit and, um, people making money and business, like all of that sort of thing is not really good. And my only comment to that is, that's what makes this country roll. And making money and having profit and, uh, doing business is how the taxes get paid in this country and jobs are provided. So, I just wanna state that profit is good, given that it's made in a reasonable and legal manner. Okay, so now is a portion for the public to come up and talk. And you can talk about anything you want for three minutes, but it can't be anything that was on tonight's agenda. Would anybody like to come up and speak? Okay. Close that portion. Okay, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn. I'm gonna take a roll call vote. I'm only kidding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're done. Thank you, everybody, for being patient and polite.